Twenty-five at six P M. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalimofu.
Here.
And trustee Tetter.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, great, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing item J under consent agenda, J four.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Court.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. So, tonight, we obviously got a full house, and so I'm going to go through some of the Roberts rules a little bit to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to talk that needs to talk and wants to talk. So, first, we're going to go through board and public announcements, and then we're going to go through the public comments, and we're going to talk a little bit more about it. If you have the agenda, there's a couple of little different things in there where you're going to be able to speak. I just want to make sure we get it clarified again, so everybody has an opportunity. So, right now, from the board, any announcements? No? If not, I do. I would like to congratulate Carrie Newbeck, our clerk. She was, has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, which is an extremely difficult designation to get, so I just wanted to commend her and thank her for her dedication to her profession. The second thing I would like to bring to attention, it's always nice to get fan mail, not for me, but for the Chief Boucher in the Fire Department. This is from Everest. They wanted to thank him for his unprecedented time and effort that he's put forward. They've had some unusual events in the last three to six months. They had a fire, they had two EMS calls, and the president over there, Mr. Nalepa, sent a letter over commending how the Fire Department behaved and their immediate attention, and thought they were incredibly professional, respectful, and they greatly appreciate it. So, thank you, Chief of the Fire Department. Any other board members have any comments or announcements? Nope. Okay. So, here we go. The public comments. There's two sections in here, right? We have a public hearing that we're going to be talking about some of the SAD paving. You are allowed, as a household, to have a voice, right? So, if you're two of you in there, one of you, please, if you want to get up, come up and speak. There's a five-minute limit when you come up and talk. There is also no interaction back and forth between the board, okay? So, in here, typically on the public hearing side of things, if you want to come up and talk during that point, then you don't come back up again when we go talk about the motion. In which, in this particular case, we won't be making a public comment, so if you want to talk, get up in the public hearing section when it comes to the SAD, if you're here for one of the SADs, okay? We will be very strict on the five minutes, not to be disrespectful, but to actually be respectful to give everybody else an opportunity to talk.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
It is public comment time, though, for items not on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
I was just going to give them the rules.
Okay, all right.
The rules apply whether we're talking to public or in the public hearing. So, at this time, I would like to open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to get up and talk about an item that is not on the agenda. So, this would be not an SAD paving issue. Does anybody have anything they want to come up and talk about? No? Okay. Anybody online? No? All right. Board? No? All right. Let's get into the public hearing. Public hearing, number one, public road special assessment district twenty-two-five for SAD number one for repaving public roads, Sheringham Woods subdivision. This is up there for discussion. So, not, sorry, not discussion, for comment. Does anyone want to come up on the board first and make a comment?
Excuse me, we need to open the public hearing officially with the time.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'd like to open the hearing officially at six oh five.
Thank you.
All right. So, first one.
I'm Ross Dickinson, five-seven-seven-five, Belshire Lane, and I'm the supervisor, or the president of the HOA. I just want to say thanks for this road program. Without that, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, or trying to fix our roads, because we wouldn't have the financial ability. So, I just want to thank the township for their inputs on this and the opportunity to go through this process, because otherwise, HOAs generally don't have a lot of cash on hand to do stuff like this. And the Road Commission for Oakland County, that's the most expensive way to go, and it's very difficult to go that way as well. So, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and all the work that everybody's put forth for this. So, that's it.
Does anybody else like to get up and talk about SAD one repaving for the Sheringham Woods subdivision? Is there anybody online that would like to talk about G one, Sheringham Woods subdivision repaving? No? Okay. Then I would like to close the public hearing for the Sheringham Woods subdivision at six oh seven. Next, I would like to open up for G two, the public hearing for the SAD repaving for Spring Lake North subdivision at six oh seven. Anyone who would like to come up, please come up and give your name, address, and any comments? Nope, we got a collision.
We need to say something. We've sent emails.
Alan Overton, six-seven-eight-six, Berwick Drive. I am a resident in Spring Lake North. I'm also the president of board of the HOA. Although this is not an HOA project, the board has provided our support. We've provided oversight, and that was done in the best interest of our homeowners. I was one of the petitioners that collected signatures. I'm a hundred percent in support of this project. I would not have done that if I didn't believe a hundred percent in it. Thank you to everybody here, everyone on the township that's put work in. I don't think people understand how much work goes into this, so thank you to everybody that's involved. I'd like to thank the homeowners that were very welcoming to me when I went door-to-door and overwhelmingly supportive of this project. The last thing I'd like to say is a huge thank you to our own Hastings family. They sacrificed. They put in so many hours on this project to make sure that it was done right. So, kudos to them. Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Doug Pratt. I live at six-seven-six-one Berwick Drive, homeowner for twelve years. This won't be quite as positive, unfortunately. Thank you for hearing me out. Let me start with a quote. "Truth does not mind being questioned. A lie does not like being challenged." Wish I could get credit for that, but I can't. I did not plan attending tonight's meeting until I made a Facebook post last night. Everybody's aware of that's here, and the post was more about this meeting and to bring the attention that everybody had a voice, to be able to attend, whether you're for it or against it. Instantly, I was attacked with daggers. Then I came back with my own truth, which I believe is the truth, and I said why I was against it. Next thing I know, I was removed from the Facebook group. So, here I am. So, I wrote a letter, because I did not attend, planned to attend this, and I'm going to read what I, what I meant to say. So, it pains me to write this letter concerning the HOA board of Spring Lake North. Last summer, a two thousand twenty-four petition was sent around the sub for households assigned, gain information for the road project. The petition was a color white, which is only requires signature yes to gain information, and eventually would accumulate enough signatures to proceed to the next phase. The process was very aggressive due to a short window in a rushed timeframe. The board did hold informal meetings for household members to attend. Not sure of the tenants. I was unable to join, unfortunately, school events. Our sub is very quiet and just kind of goes with the flow, which, which is nice. It is quiet. Eventually, a second petition was passed around, which required signatures and linear footage, which was passed at fifty-one percent. This is where the confusion started amongst the homeowners. During the second phase, many homes were skipped over due to the small road linear footage. Corner lots were the focus, as I was told by the president, which has spoke. He was in my yard with my wife as a witness. He says, "Your vote does not matter. We have the corner lots to get the vote to pass." My biggest issue with the second process petition was color white, same as the previous petition. No distinct markings saying this is the official petition to move forward. Handwritten note on the bottom scratched off preliminary, added the word "formal" and the initials A O or S H, S H standing for Shelley Hastings, which is not a board member. No place on the petition for a homeowner to mark, no. All homeowners should be registered, should have, should get a registered say either yes or no when it comes to something this big. The largest road frontage lots have a lot of voting power. You know, a corner lot could be equivalent to ten different homes, but they all pay the same. Why is that? That's just crazy. I know it's, it's, it's a law that's out there that you're going by, playing by the rules. I get it. Then all of a sudden, I'm going through, looking at the information that was sent to me, luckily, and I'm looking at lot footage. Six-seven-six-one Berwick Drive, that's my home. First one I looked at. It was labeled fifteen feet. I have a hundred and fifty-foot linear to the road, right? So, it's just, just odd to me that these little mistakes are out there for a project that's, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, and it's going to cost our homeowners a hundred and eighteen dollars for additional, what do I say, payment for our home, monthly? I mean, we shouldn't have those type of mistakes. I mean, everything's kind of spaded out. I have these signatures that, that are on here, and, you know, I mean, I'm kind of shaking, and, you know, hand-scratch things on a petition. It's not clear. And in closing, I am not against the roads getting done. I'm against the process that was brought forward. I mean, our mortgages are going up a hundred and eighteen dollars, and our, and our sub is fighting right now. It is brutal. My phone is blowing up. From the back when I first even asked if the petition has passed, I got these instant messages. Last night, my phone was totally blown up. I had another message this morning. I woke up that I received at ten, two A M. from a corner lot. What the hell is going on? And I had to explain, and I'm not sure if they're regretting their decision or not, but I just don't understand how this could pass, you know, when we have this confusion that's going on out there. Our sub is literally torn apart by these board members for how this was done. There's deceit that's out there. I looked at how this was voted. It was eight to eight, eight vote board members. Everybody voted for it. I was on that board once. Nobody is ever in agreement. It's just, find it strange. David Hayward, neighbor of mine, he's right in front of me. I know he voted yes, and I don't know if he has a vote in this or not. I hope not, because I know he voted to get this passed, so I appreciate your time.
I, I just wanted to follow that up and thank everyone that was.
Can we get your name and address?
Oh, Kayon Sutton, six-seven-seven-six, Berwick Drive. I wanted to thank everyone that was involved with the project. I know they don't have to take the time to spend their nights, their evenings, and all the effort that they put into it, which was, it's great. I love living in a community where people step up like that, but as the first speaker mentioned, he wholeheartedly believes in it, and I believe this is a very flawed system, one where people have no positivity or hope that Clarkson as a community can improve their roads. If it snows out a half an inch, we close the schools because the roads are so bad. We have to, we're, it was almost fear mongered into signing anything with these roads, because the roads to get to our subdivision are just abysmal. So, people are scared. They don't want to see that happen to their house. So, that's how it started. And from there, a flawed system continued to snowball. People are getting mad and getting angry with each other, when the people that are leading this, they mean the best, but it's a flawed system where they go door-to-door and, and steer it into the direction that they want. I was carving pumpkins with my kids, and I was approached about signing something. It's not, Al, he's a good guy. He's just wanting to get the signatures, because he thinks this is best for his family. The shortcomings comes on the side of the community. We need help with the roads, but we're picking up all of the bill, pretty much. There's a minor, minor part that you guys do to, to help assist us. Then, if you can't afford to pay it in a lump sum, you guys are offering to charge us a six percent interest on it. It just seems crazy that the roads are this bad, and I don't even think they're that bad. We just don't want them to see them as bad as our neighbors. We don't want to see that happen to us. So, we're scared. People are signing things. People are arguing. I just want somebody to step up and help us and make sure that the system is improved, so the next subdivision doesn't get feared into signing something that they shouldn't sign, because I don't think we should have signed it, and that's my stance. I'm not trying to fight with any neighbors or disagree, but the system is completely flawed, and it's a shortcoming of the way we do business. So, that's all I had to say.
Good evening. Jim Withers, five-seven-zero-five, Berwick Court. Want to start by saying, following up on Doug's statements. I didn't even know Doug before this started. We started talking because of a common frustration, much like the previous gentleman, very flawed system. This, the first petition, we were told, and, and several, you can ask anybody in our sub, several different people said several different things. I was told that it was for, request for information only for the road. And then, we didn't hear anything. And so, I asked questions. I have a couple of friends on the board. I'm asking questions. We don't get a whole lot of information. Then all of a sudden, oh, it's passed. Well, I know several, I was kind of asked, but not formally, to sign, and I, I said no. But several people, just like Doug said, "Your vote doesn't matter. We've already got the corner lots," because we're basing this off of an antiquated law. The corner lots, the bigger lots get more voting power. That doesn't even make sense. We pay the same HOA fees. We pay, we're going to end up paying the same amount as the corner lots. Our vote should count the same. The second petition, as Doug said, was scratched out, a preliminary and handwritten in. How do we know when that was written in? After the signatures? Before the signatures? I never even saw the formal petition, as did several of my neighbors. I have a friend who's on a corner lot. They went to their house several times. She didn't answer because she was afraid. She didn't want to sign it. All of a sudden, her house was egged three separate times, three separate times. Fear mongering, like the last gentleman said. And I want to say, I'm thankful for the work that most of the people did, because it does take volunteer effort. When we were asked, I asked, "Why does the corner lot count for more vote?" We don't get an answer. You can look it up, but it's very all over the place. You don't get a solid answer even on, online. As Doug stated before, it just all sounds like a broken record. The information on the assessments is incorrect. His property says fifteen linear feet. How do we know that there's not all of these discrepancies on every other lot in the, in the subdivision? Not, maybe not to that effect, but fifteen feet to a hundred and fifty feet is a huge discrepancy. How many more, yeah, how many more properties are wrong? I, in, in, in closing for me, because I want to keep it short and sweet, I, I would strongly urge that you look over what we're saying and not approve it at this point, because it was all in deceit. We were told one thing and given another, and a lot of us didn't even get a chance to vote. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kurt Haynes. I live with my family at fifty-seven-ten Berwick Court in Spring Lake North. I am a current board member of Spring Lake North HOA. I wanted to highlight the informational meetings that were available to our residents. Meeting details were shared through Spring Lake North mailings, physical Spring Lake North neighborhood sign, or social media. First, road informational meeting on October tenth, twenty-twenty-four, at Independence Township Hall. Next, Spring Lake North HOA annual meeting, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, at the Carriage House. I attended these meetings in person. At these meetings, I witnessed numerous questions and concerns that were addressed and discussed. Additional meetings I was made aware of and had an opportunity to attend. A coffee and donuts road informational meeting on September seventh and eighth, twenty-twenty-four, at the Hastings address. Also, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, at the same Hastings address. Also, a road project information Q and A on October sixth, twenty-twenty-four, here at Independence Township Hall. With all the information provided at informational meetings and from Spring Lake North mailings, I was satisfied and comfortable in making my decision on how I wanted to support our road project. I would like to thank all Spring Lake North residents, especially Ben Hastings and his family, Independence Township employees and board members for their time and consideration on this project. I would also like to request my wife gets an opportunity to speak on our behalf as well with my remaining time. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Pamela Haynes. I live at fifty-seven-ten Berwick Court in Spring Lake North. First, I would like to begin by thanking every board member, past and present. Serving on the board is a thankless position, and it often goes unnoticed with how much time and effort are invested into making decisions in the betterment of the community. My husband is currently serving on the board for his fourth year, and I can assure you, he would never compromise his integrity when it comes to our neighborhood, ever. The board is deeply committed to doing what's best for all of us, and it's disheartening to see many people criticize them after all the hard work they've put in, much without recognition. Time and time again, the board is asked for volunteers to step up, get involved, but the majority chooses not to. However, they are quick to complain when things don't go their way. It's a tough position to be in, but they continue to serve selflessly without pay. I refuse to join in on the social media discussions, to engage with those who are, tear down good people from behind a screen. I'm sorry you were misinformed or unaware of certain decisions, but there were ample opportunities to attend the meeting or ask questions, and to get the clarity on the road project, these meetings were not hard to find. Road project informational Q and A, October sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Road informational meeting, October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at Independence Township Hall. Spring Lake North annual meeting on October twenty-eighth, at the Carriage House. Coffee and donuts at the Hastings home on September seventh and eighth, and the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. The reality is that many don't attend the meetings to ask questions, voice concerns, or even gain a real understanding of the issues at hand. Ben and his family have sacrificed multiple weekends to be available for these discussions. He made himself accessible by offering communication and even provided his personal phone number to the entire neighborhood, welcoming anyone to reach out with questions, concerns at any time, that the majority of the neighborhood has no interest in stepping up to help. Yet, the moment position, petitions gain support, the criticism floods in. I hope that more will consider joining the board to become part of the change that you want to see in the community. Thank you for letting me take the time, and I hope to strive for a more respectful understanding and supportive of each other, and we can continue to enjoy the wonderful neighborhood we share. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Powers. I am at six-seven-seven-eight Berwick Drive. I am currently on our HOA board as secretary. I want to thank all of you and the remainder of Independence Township and everybody that has put their heart and soul into working together with us on this project, because I know how many hours this has taken. So, I appreciate them. I appreciate all of you, and then, of course, obviously, the Hastings family and all that they have put into this project. I have spent countless hours on the phone with Ben, like, throughout this whole project, till ten, eleven o'clock at night, because of how terrible some of these neighbors have been. And it's just really unfortunate that all of the neighbors who have nothing but negative things to say did not attend any of those meetings that Kurt and his wife just listed now. So, if they felt that they were misinformed, I apologize for that, but there has been ample opportunity to get all of the correct information. Unfortunately, the misinformation comes from people who are posting things that don't know the accurate know the accurate information. So, instead of listening to someone like Ben, who has spent a gazillion hours on this project to get the accurate information, they're listening to somebody else who may be unhappy about this road project. I understand that it's a costly thing. It's not something that any of us want to do, you know, right away to spend that much money, but at the same time, I'd rather spend this money than triple the amount years down the road when the roads are even worse. So, I just, I, I wish that people would have taken the time to hear out Ben, to come to the meetings that the township was willing to host on their own time. They weren't, it wasn't on the clock. They were coming in on a Sunday afternoon so that they could provide information to all of our neighbors, and unfortunately, they didn't take advantage of that. So, they do seem to feel that they're misinformed. But I just want to let you guys know that we have been the most transparent that we could possibly be about this project, and it isn't an HOA project. It just so happens that Ben, who took this on, is our treasurer. He's on the board, but this was not an HOA project. This is a township project. And I just, I, I really wish that those of you who have concerns and that you feel you were misinformed, that you take the time to go back and you go on our website and you go on the township website and you look up everything that has been done and get the proper information, and then you may not be so stressed out about this project because it's really straightforward when you look into it. Thank you.
How you doing? Calvin Marshall, 5585 Adderstone. I didn't plan on talking, and just hearing a lot of what's been said, mostly about the condition of our, our neighborhood and the fighting going on. We can disagree. That's totally okay. This is America. We're allowed to disagree. We're allowed to have different beliefs, but we should be kind to each other. We should be able to walk around the neighborhood, say hi to everybody. I love Jim. Jim's a good friend. Doug gave me a basketball hoop for the boys. I mean, we have a great neighborhood, and we just need to not get so open arms about this kind of stuff. The information was out there. I voted yes. Would I be okay not spending an extra $80, $100 a month? Sure. Do I want good roads? Yes, because I want my boys to be able to ride their bikes down the roads, you know? Our neighbors totally destroyed their roads. I hate even coming in their neighborhood. Am I willing to pay to avoid that? Absolutely. Ben's done an incredible amount of work. Could he have done better? I don't think so. Does he need the corner lots? Probably. Does he not need some of the corner lots? And is it okay to say, I don't need your vote? I think it's okay to say that, especially if you have the majority. But it is what it is at this point, and really, what I want to say is that it's our choice how we treat each other as neighbors, and I think that's the, the most important thing here. It's not just about spending a couple of extra dollars on the road. I know that's a lot of money for some people, and it's going to be challenging, but unfortunately, when a vote happens and you're on the losing end, it is what it is. And you gotta, you gotta go along with it, and it's hard to make arguments about the process when the process is what it is. And especially knowing Ben, he's pretty meticulous about pretty much everything. So, personally, I don't have any issue. I'm actually pretty impressed on, on all the work that went into it and how knowledgeable he is in general. If we're not afraid to talk to people and, and to disagree in a kind way, you'll get the information you want if you're willing to have the conversations. So, that's pretty much all I wanted to say, Alan. Ben, thanks a lot for everything.
Hello. My name's Ben Hastings, 5583 Adderstone Drive, Clarkston, Michigan, 48346. I do have a prepared statement that I would like to read, and I also have copies for the public record if the trustees are interested in following along this evening.
You can just pass them down if you want.
Okay. So, as was mentioned, I am the road project team leader for the Spring Lake North subdivision in Clarkston, Michigan. First, on behalf of the homeowners, I would like to personally thank the volunteers and all the government employees who have worked to make this project possible. Without your tireless effort, it would be difficult to see the project through. This evening, I'd like to address the history of the project up to this point, address some concerns that have been raised by a few residents, and answer any questions from the board of trustees, should you have any. Our project started with research one year ago. We needed to understand what the life cycle of the road structure was and when we should begin making repairs. That research phase lasted three months and was concluded by a Pacer Road Survey conducted by me over a two-day period. Our next step was to hire an engineer to pull cores for testing. This process involved lab testing and geotechnical analysis of our road structure. G2 Consulting Group wrote an engineering report detailing that our road condition was found to be fair to poor and provided specifications and guidance on how to make a cost-effective repair. Following this process, we held seven informational meetings, sent six mailers, obtained bids from vendors, and circulated two petitions to our community. We also established a website with frequently asked questions and made every effort to advise people to attend the meetings. I also listed my name and phone number on every personal communication. Over the past 24 hours, the township has received a handful of letters from residents with a range of concerns and requests. These vary from the color of the paper used for the petitions to claims of kickbacks and ethical concerns. I'm saddened that this has happened as it stems from misleading and untrue information posted online yesterday. I would like to assure both the board of trustees and our residents this evening that this process has been carried out with the utmost care. We have spent countless hours making sure that the repair is both cost-effective and long-lasting. Furthermore, we have a large amount of government oversight stemming from various departments in the township and our COC. Considering these letters, I do need to address the following for the public record. Both preliminary and formal petitions were circulated to homeowners. Both petitions were verified and authenticated by two separate departments at the township. We make every effort to speak to everyone at their homes. Every home was contacted, however, there were a few cases where people were either unable or unwilling to answer their door. The process for petitioning lasted a total of two and a half months combined between both petitions. We are legally required to follow the rules set out in Public Act 188 of 1954. These rules are set by the Michigan Legislature. Our data for deciding project details came directly from G2 Consulting Group, who works directly for our homeowners. They were the engineers who gave us the current road status and repair specifications. We have secured the following for our project. First, $100,000 of grant money. Second, holding 2024 pricing into 2025 with our selected vendors. Third, collaborating with Sheringham Woods in Chestnut Hill to help obtain better terms and price. Fourth, the first payment for our project will not be due from homeowners until February 2026. Fifth, engineering and construction testing and monitoring. All the vendors involved in construction will hold pre-production meetings to make sure that the health and safety of our children and disabled residents are managed responsibly and carefully. I do need to address a serious accusation made by a homeowner in his letter about a possible kickback or skin-in-the-game accusation. This accusation is both untrue and irresponsible. I would never risk my reputation, the reputation of the volunteers, homeowners, township, RCOC, vendors, or the subdivisions coming after our project. I've spoken at links with this homeowner on several occasions and helped to facilitate documentation to address his concerns with the project. In closing, I'd like to remind our homeowners in our subdivision to read the official letters from the township moving forward. They may also go to our website at springlakenorth.com or review tonight's agenda packet for details on the project. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions from both the board of trustees and homeowners at any time. You may call me directly at 517-425-0542. I would also be happy to provide any supporting documentation that the board deems appropriate and necessary. And at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board trustees may have. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to come up? Okay. Anybody online would like to comment?
I have one comment.
Sure. Start, can you please, excuse me? Yeah, can you name an address? I think you were going there, but can I get your name and address, please?
Yes. Yes, sir. Krista Dorman at 6730 Berwick Drive. I am, well, we are completely opposed to the project. We have from the very beginning. We have seen one person come to our door, or one, I believe it was Ben, and I'm not sure if it was his wife or not, but I know Ben came to our house one time in the summer. They made a proposal. We came to the township meeting in October. We stated our objection. My husband and I have been around the neighborhood. Is it the greatest condition? No, it's 20 years old, but we don't feel that we need to spend $8,000 per household to fix it. We understand that's just our statement, but again, since this has started, we've only spoken to one person regarding anything. We did not see two petitions, as Ben stated. They brought, I believe, one the first time. I never saw it. I believe my husband saw it. We were never given an option to sign a second petition, even though we are on a corner lot. And I just think that with all the things that our neighborhood puts on the website, the lack of communication about this project, and this is my opinion, was horrendous. We had a few meetings that were put on here. I just feel like from the very beginning that the board wanted to approve it, and if that's what the majority wants, that's fine. Apparently, we have to pay the $8,000 no matter what because it's, it's part of the HOA, but we, we were never given opportunity, we felt like, to really speak our voice and have a part to say, where is this coming from? And we just, I, I think that it was shady from the very beginning, and that's not really a question, more of a, a statement than anything.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else online that would like to comment? No? Okay. At this point in time, I'd like...
Before you close?
Yep.
Get ready to close. Before you close, the following objections were received by email from the property owners of the following parcels. And we also did receive two in favor. 0828401025 and 0840, I'm sorry, 0828402035.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, at this point, I'd like to close public comments for the Road Assessment District, SAD Number Two, Repaving Public Roads, Spring Lake North subdivision at 6:40. Now, I would like to open public hearing, Road Special Assessment District, 2025, SAD Number Three, for repaving public roads, Chestnut Hill Farms subdivision at 6:40. Any comp, yes?
The following objection was received by email from the property owner of the following parcel, 0828302011.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to speak? Come on up. Give your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. Mitch Bernhardt from 6360 Woodcrest Ridge, Chestnut Hills. Hi, everybody. This is what I would like to say on the matter. I can't tell you here, standing here, how much I owe for this, for this plan. And unfortunately, I spoke with several of my neighbors. They all came up with different numbers. Everyone agreed that we didn't necessarily participate in the voting, and whether right or wrong, for or against, I think, I, my, my belief is everyone should participate. Everyone should be informed. And even one of the members who I contacted, one of my neighbors' good friends, they said, yes, I am in support, but I heard it was this much, which was a, a lower amount than than we had heard. So, just that alone, this isn't like buying, you know, a Lego set, you know, potentially, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars. I don't know if it's 13,000, 17,000 per household, but this is, this is a big lump of, a big lump of money. And I would expect that everybody plays a part in it. Everybody has a, a voice in it, and everyone knows exactly what they're going to be paying. I, I haven't been in the house too long. I don't have the, this giant equity bucket. We're, we're planning on moving eventually, but because our family is growing, but at the same time, I can imagine that there are other people in different situations than me who are much more comfortable with that amount, or families who are much less comfortable than me paying that amount. But at the end of the day, I don't know what I'm paying here today. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Lindsay Kirkland, 5590 Chickadee Lane. When the project first started, we were approached by the HOA president, letting us know that all of Chestnut Hill Farms was going to be included in the project, and the cost was roughly $16,000 plus. We were asking other neighbors on Chickadee. Apparently, half of Chickadee is included in Chestnut Hill Farms. The other side of Chickadee is not, and they were told the same thing. Our concern for our home is that our driveway connects to Chickadee Lane, which is not going to be included in this project. When we got the map from the township, we noticed that everyone else up the side of Chickadee, on our side, a part of Chestnut Hill Farms, is no longer part of this project. The three homes on Chickadee that are included, our home, our neighbors across the street who have frontage, or their driveway connects to Chickadee Court, I'm sorry, which will be assessed. Another home up the street, driveway does not connect to Chickadee as well. So, we are the only home in this entire project that's not benefit from this project, and therefore, we're asking to be excluded if possible. We were told that because the side of our property has frontage on one of these streets that is being assessed, that we were not able to be excluded. And I understand if that's how it has to be, if that's the case, we are asking to pay half. So, potentially pay for half of the frontage on our side yard. If Chickadee Lane down the road needed to be done, we would agree to pay half for that as well, instead of paying full price for two different projects potentially down the road. So, I'm not sure if the map is necessary, but yes, Chickadee Lane is where our driveway connects to. However, it is not going to be done. Everyone else's driveway that's included in the Chestnut Hill Farms project is going to be connected to a street that will be improved. Thank you.
Hi. Cindy Christensen, 6477 Chickadee Court. I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I was here when they tried to put through a petition to do our roads six or eight years ago, six years ago, I think, and it was going to cost me $30,000. Today, I'm being told $17,000. And to address the person who said there's a different price, they're hearing different prices, maybe somebody can educate me. My understanding was I'm getting a very high rate because I have the biggest frontage on, in the sub, the road frontage. And so, I assume that's why I'm getting a higher rate than some people who are getting a lower rate. Is anybody on the board, tell me whether that's true?
Everybody gets the same rate.
Everybody gets the same? Everybody gets the same rate?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can somebody tell me why, um, uh, I can't remember which sub, Sherrington or whichever, they were talking about 10,000 or 7,000, and I'm going to be paying 17,000? Can somebody explain that to me?
Excuse me. All questions need to be addressed to the board. And actually, at this point in time, just to reiterate what I said earlier, the board can't respond. So this is a public comment for you to come up and voice your thoughts.
Okay, I would love somebody come to me and tell me why and what is the real truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Josh Wimble, 6433 Woodcrest Ridge. Very jealous of everyone who pre-wrote some comments. I didn't think to do that. Um, I don't know if this is the official responses or anything, but I've heard it said by someone before me, uh, the different rates. Uh, that's because of the different subdivisions, I believe. Since you guys couldn't answer that one, uh, the different SAD projects have different rates because of the state of the road. Being in Chestnut Hill Farms, I think we're the neighborhood everyone keeps referring to as the really bad ones they didn't want to get as bad as. Um, I actually moved in, I bought my house on a day like today when the roads were covered in snow, fortunately for the person who sold it to me. Was very disappointed when the snow thawed after I had paid for the home and I found I could put my two-year-old in one of the potholes. Was even more disappointed when my neighbor told me, you know, they're going to charge us $28,000 or more to fix it some one of these days. And so I was pleasantly surprised, uh, when Paul, the HOA president, who led this project, though it wasn't an HOA project, it had non-HOA people involved, said, hey, there's a solution that we're seeing from some of the other subdivisions to do this for way cheaper, potentially $10,000 less. And so even though I'm not an HOA type, I like to be left alone. I signed up to help go around and petition and was delighted that every door I knocked on, except for one, which was 12 doors, uh, all said yes. And the one door, they politely said, no. I think we had a lot more people understanding the terrible condition of our roads. I want my two and four-year-old to be able to ride their bikes on it. Since I am here, I am going to say another thing I'm disappointed in. I'm a pretty skeptical guy. I am skeptical of the level of support. This sad thing is awesome, but toward township planning. Um, our road, right between Walden and, uh, and maybe, is kind of used as a cut-through by not just a lot of passenger vehicles, but also commercial vehicles, including some working on township projects. A lot of times when I'm coming home in that rush hour, I'll watch three or four cars get frustrated with a long line, cut through our road. So I'm very concerned, long-term, that our investment's going to be protected. I've gone to the county even, I'm, I'm the kind of guy who looks for different solutions, and ask for some sort of signage, at least, to keep the big, heavy commercial trucks from cutting a minute off their time instead of going down to Sashville or going up through downtown, which I know are slow options. But my heart sank when I saw that mire opening up, because I'm like, great, more people are going to cut through to get a minute or two off their time to get to that mire. Rode our roads, cut through the stop signs, put my kids at risk. That's all disappointing, and since you all are people in authority, I say we're going to do this investment, which I support wholeheartedly. Um, even though it's really tough for us, our house has gone through all manner of repair the last few years, I really ask you all to start thinking creatively about how to control the traffic flow through those of us who are less fortunate than some of these subdivisions that have dens. We're getting treated as a terrible cut-through, a lot of times by township-related vehicles. I, if I had the time, I would, uh, do more on that, but I've done all I can asking the county what kind of signage they can put up, which they've taken no action on. Um, that said, I appreciate Paul, who put countless hours into this. Um, and as far as informing folks, the letters, the door hangers. Paul made me give up three or four nights going back out to all the houses on my list, to make sure I knocked on them all a couple of times. Sometimes it was 10 degrees out there, and I was missing football on Sunday night. So I, I understand the whole team did that. I understand it was some 70% of frontage. I think that accounts actually for more than half the total houses, too. So I think our subdivision had a lot of support for this, and I appreciate everybody who supported it, even though I, I really think we got to do something about the traffic flow through our neighborhood to protect this investment, because it's asking a lot of us who, uh, have a lot of other things to put our money into. Thank you.
My name is Gary Kuzno. I live at 5961 Misty Hill Drive. I've lived there for 25 years. Um, our road, our subdivision Chestnut Hills is the one that everybody refers to as, uh, Pothole City. Um, it is, it is undrivable. Um, it's a safety factor. Um, the previous gentleman, uh, you know, talked about wanting his kids to be able to ride a bike on their street. My kids learned to ride a bike over at elementary, over at Clarkston Elementary parking lot. The road has been bad for a really long time. This is my fourth go-around. I tried doing it three times through the Oakland County ROC program, and the neighbors turned it down, and justifiably so. Um, you know, I think at the highest point for my house, it was like 28 grand. Um, the program that you guys have put together have made it much more significantly doable. Am I crazy about paying that kind of money? No. But I will happily write that, to be able to drive down a road, have my neighbors walk down the street, um, have my grandkids ride their bikes down the street. Um, this is, this is a great thing. It, it really is. And, uh, I was responsible, I got involved with Paul. He asked me to get involved. I went to 16 houses. Fifteen of them welcomed me with open arms, signed the petitions both times. Um, like I said, I, I won, and the one gentleman that did not want to sign it, it was just because he has a young family, and I understand that. Um, so I just want to thank the board for taking the time. Also thanking Paul and my neighbors for, uh, supporting the project. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. Kara Constand, 6401 Chestnut Hill Court. Um, I can't in good conscience agree to this project having no idea how much we're going to be paying, whether there are terms for repayment, whether there is a loan option, whether there is an interest rate, what that might look like. We haven't been given any of that information. I don't know if our other neighbors have, but we don't know what that looks like for us, coming here today. Um, I was approached about a single petition, um, and in that petition, it's my understanding that that was for interest purpose only. And I did disagree with the petition at the time, did not sign. Um, but I never received a second petition or anything moving forward. No additional information about any types of terms. Um, on a second part of that, I know all the lots would be paying the same amount, although I don't know what that amount would be. Um, my family lives right at the entrance. We're on the road for maybe two seconds at a time. Um, so any damage to that road is not from us. Any use of that road is not us. It's probably more people who don't even live in the subdivision as they cut through use those roads more than my family. Um, so I would ask if this is approved, that we be offered some form of special assessment or cut rate. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hi. I'm, uh, Paul Marmond, 5847 Misty Hill Drive. This is my 35th year living there. Uh, I happen to be president of the HOA, although this project is not specifically from the HOA. It's, as you've heard from Gary and others, there's multiple people that have been behind it. Um, I would like to thank the board for coming up with a plausible program to finally get the roads done in a fair way and in a way that can actually pass. This is actually the fifth time since 2006 that we did an SAD. And the last cost, uh, as we mentioned a couple of times, was about $28,500 per home. And if they're corners or getting close to a corner, it was like 33.5. Uh, it went from a $3.4 million project through the RCOC down to a $2 million project, um, because we were able to work with our own contractors and change the scope of the project. And so that's roughly a 40% savings per homeowner, give or take. Um, so that made it plausible. So I went around, I had, uh, five other people actually helping me, although I did the lion's share of it, because I'm retired. And we got 67% of our subdivision to sign the petition, the formal petition, saying yes, they want to go ahead with the roads. So though the cost is still more than any of us want to pay, it's the only way it's going to get done, and it's roughly 40% less than it was four years ago, um, which is remarkable, because there's not much that goes down 40% in the last four years. Everything's gone up 25%. Materials are higher, costs are higher, everything's higher. Uh, so we're excited about it. Uh, you know, I just, again, want to thank everybody for their efforts. And any of my neighbors in the subdivision who are missing any information, I'd be happy to give them my number directly and my email and speak to them, either personally or on the phone, and, uh, answer any questions. But 67% signing it, saying yes. Try to find two-thirds of any group that agrees on anything today. I think it's remarkable. And yes, we're Pothole City. Nobody has questioned that our roads, uh, whether they need repaving or not. Everybody knows we need it done. So it's, nobody wants to pay. And I wish the state would pay, I wish the county would pay, I wish the township would pay, but wishing isn't going to get it done. And this is the only way it's going to get done. So look forward to, uh, hopefully breaking ground to get this done, starting in April. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? No? Okay. Anybody online?
Hello?
Hello. Your name and address, please?
Oh, hi, I'm Barbara Taylor. Barbara Taylor, 5730 Chestnut Hill Drive. And I'd like to thank everyone in the township that came up with this and helped us, and everyone in my neighborhood that, um, worked hard on it. Because like one of my neighbors stated, I've worked on it four or five times, and I've been here for 26 years. So I moved in before our street was a cut-through. And it's impossible to even ride your bike on the street, but we all know that. We've reiterated a few times. I just have a huge thank you to everyone that has worked on this, because we deserve it. The township deserves it. Our neighbors deserve it. It's, it's really going to be a wonderful thing, and I think it's going to improve our neighbors' quality of life. So thank you very much. And it's, I, I just have to just say that about 10 more times. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? No? In the house before I close?
No.
Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for Public Roads Special Assessment District, 2025 SAD number three, repaving public roads, Chestnut Hill Farms subdivision at 657. All right. At this point, we're going to move on and do the presentations. We have at this time, a presentation for a quarterly investment report from Paul Brown, Treasurer. All right.
Uh, good evening. Uh, the board will be quite familiar with this report. It's required quarterly, and we have a pretty good audience here today. Uh, one of the treasurer's duties is investing, uh, the township, the taxpayers' monies that we hold on to as we disperse it to, to pay for services and police and fire and all the things that we, uh, provide. Um, my responsibility is to...
Continue, please.
My responsibility to invest this money under the guide of, uh, the state laws. It's, it's done in a very secure way. Probably 90-some percent of this money is in, in treasuries, save this investment in the world. Um, but it's also important that we're transparent about where this stands. We continue to improve these reports to give more and more transparency. And so I'm going to move quickly through this. I do want to get to a part where there's some plans to actually make some additional improvements to the report going through the next quarter. And these came out of the, uh, Investment Advisory Committee meeting with some ideas to add some more information that will both help the public and the board to see where we're at on our, on our holdings. Um, so we'll start with, with, uh, the graph part here, uh, and I'll just go through the overview. The Federal Reserve began its rate lowering plan with two reductions in 2024. The current guidance is a slower decline in rates for 2025. We continued to measure, a measured approach, uh, as we kind of await better indicators on the bond market as it moves forward. Uh, our average weighted yield has reduced as we've, as we've increased our liquidity, which means I've got more money that's really in the current buckets. And if you look at the maturity distribution, you'll see that I've got 38% of our funds are really liquid. So within one day, we could do something. Now, the interesting part is even with one-day liquidity, I'm above 4% interest being returned on those funds. The rates are really continuing to be very strong. Um, our treasury yield has, has, uh, dropped a little bit. Um, we have had an increase in our unrealized losses. These are tied to the longer-held holdings at really low rates. And I know the board is familiar with that. We've got 1 million, 2 million, that was bought three years ago at, say, 0.75% interest. So those always seem to have a great deal of fluctuation. I'm going to jump down to the section here that shows sort of where we were from our unrealized losses back in June of 2023, is a million dollars. For folks that don't understand how we get to a space like that, and I want you to understand why we don't worry about it. If we went out and bought a, let's say, over a period of a few months, $5 million in US treasuries that had interest rates of 0.75%, which is where they were back then, as soon as the interest rates start going up, the market value of our holdings starts going down. And it results in us having unrealized losses. We have no plan to sell these assets. And what that means is as it gets to maturity, it has a face value of $5 million. So we earn the interest, plus we get the $5 million back once it matures. And so you can see the pattern of that, going from a million-dollar loss to 800,000 of unrealized loss, to half a million. It ticked up again. It went all the way down from September to only 82,000 in unrealized losses. And it's ticked back up again, but again, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market still, especially the bond and treasury markets. That number, 275, has already dropped by 100 grand in the first 75 days of this year. So we see that a lot, and again, as long as we have our liquidity and don't have to sell these, we will never recognize that loss. We'll get all the money from those investments. I want to jump into, uh, well, here, I'll just point out, our average weighted yield is 3.5%. Our average maturity is at a little over half a year right now. I expect that to increase here as we start, um, putting some money a little bit further out, between a year and two years. And we are pretty close to the benchmark yield. The benchmark yields, actually, for 30- and 90-day T-bills, they're almost identical. And so, again, this is a pattern we haven't, haven't seen in, in the past. But for a while, we had an inverted, uh, inverted yield curve, which means we're getting a higher rate of return on short-term than you did for 10 years, which is really strange. That's going to change in the next year or so, and we'll get back to normal. The changes that the advisory, Investment Advisory Committee sort of brought up about us possibly doing really comes to the, the detailed holding report we're looking at here. As you recall, this is a report we added, um, I don't know, a year and a half, two years back, to give more transparency. This report shows every single holding. It includes where it's being held, when it was bought, when its maturity date is, our cost, its current value, its yield, and unrealized gains and losses. So we get really good information for the board to see what we're buying. Most important thing for, for my duty is to make sure that I protect principal. That's number one. What we want to add to this report, and I'm going to go back to the next page here, this shows the total unrealized losses of, of 275,000 at December. What we want to add to this, and, and one thing you'll notice is that I've got 41 million in this holding report, but total resources I have is 58 million. So we want to provide some additional detail, not only on the difference, what's that 16 million represent. A big chunk of it is tax money that came in right at the end of December when everyone's mortgage companies paid their taxes. It comes in right near the end, so it's sitting in the tax account, in a checking account. We can provide more information about those breakdowns by modifying this holding report so that we have the information that's here, but we're going to add some additional lines below it, not only to show the amount of money in each of the checking accounts, but some additional information that talks about which of our funds has the different monies, right? Because the 58 million dollars is, is part of the fire department's money, the police millage, water and sewer department has a good piece of that money, is their fund balance, the general fund. And that was brought up at our Investment Advisory Committee. We think it's a great idea. So, and I'm going to work with the supervisor as we look at showing this on the report and seeing the fund balance information, how we can better present that, not only for the board, but for the public. So with that, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them. So, with that, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, you'll look forward to increases in our sort of transparency and information that can be provided quarterly with our holdings. Good? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody has questions about this, wants to call me later on, I know I probably bored some of you to death, but I'm always available to talk about this stuff. This is your money. We take that pretty seriously, and make sure we have good control of it.
All right, moving on. Carryover postponed agenda items, we do not have any. So we are going to the consent agenda. Number one, we're going to request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes for February 4, 2025. Second, we're going to request to approve the February 11, 2025 check run, including ACH for $1,029,105.47, and ratify the January 31, 2025 payroll for $391,570.71. And then request to approve the distribution site agreement between Older Person Commission and Charter Township of Independence. And four, we remove five, request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol for Sunday, May 25, 2025. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amendment?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items removed from this consent agenda, we've already went through that, so we don't have any regular business. We're going to go through these. First one, again, this will be handled by the board. We've already had the public comments, so this will be just comments between the board, and then we'll call for a vote. Request to adopt resolution 2025-006, Public Roads Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Number One, for repaving public roads, Sheringham Woods subdivision. Can I get a motion, please? All right. Before we do it, questions? Yeah. Nope?
I just have some general questions for Kim, if she could answer them for me, please. We had a lot of comments tonight. I just want you to clarify some stuff for, it kind of goes across everybody's, but for me too. So, I was under the understanding that not only was each resident, we decided was going to pay per unit, not per lineal foot. Is that different to qual-, like, why does that not align with what people, is it what they're saying about lineal footage to approve the, you know, the SAD opposed to the lot number? What's the actual basis of the calculation on?
State statute. When you're doing a road improvement or safety path improvement, anything that runs based on lineal footage for the improvement, it's based on that frontage. We have a two-step process. One, this township requires a preliminary petition with more than 51% interest shown before they can request a formal petition. So, all the, all three subdivisions did circulate, both sets of petitions, all were titled "formal petition", and-
Please.
Therefore, we came in January, and we requested that tonight's public hearings be set, because that sufficiency was met based on the petitions that were turned in to the clerk's office.
So the state regulates that it's done by lineal footage to meet the 51%?
Correct.
But the way that the payment repayment and cost distribution is per unit?
It's up to the assessor which way that goes. And the special assessment rules have not been prepared yet. That's part of the second public hearing.
Okay, so that hasn't been determined yet, which means it would be impossible to determine the cost for each unit at this point?
Until the rule is prepared, what the HOA representatives have done is taken their total cost and divided it by the number of parcels to provide an estimate. The formal rule will be prepared and turned into the clerk's office by March 5.
And how does the township determine which way they want to allocate the repayment?
That's an assessing question, and it has to be based on, what is the contributory value to each home? Is a home on a corner lot going to benefit twice as much as a home with half the frontage? And my decision on that will probably be no. It will be one unit per household.
Okay, so we don't have a dollar amount that everyone is locked into yet in the process, so that was a true statement?
That's public hearing number two.
So that's coming. I-
There are estimates provided, but the formal rule is not yet prepared.
That's good to know. And in this situation of the Chickadee Lane thing, I know it's a different SAD, but I'm going to ask general SAD questions, so I can get them all out of the way at one time, if you don't mind.
Sure.
How does that work as far as frontage driveway? Who determines if, like that odd situation where the woman said that her driveway approached the road, but it's not going to, you know, the other side doesn't, can you be assessed for just a side yard or a front yard? And how does that determination be made?
I'm going to give you a little diagram here. So, this side of the road is Birdland, Highwood Village. This side of the road is Chestnut Hill Farms. So if there's a side street here, and this home has frontage on both, if they have frontage that's going to be paved that abuts their property line, they are included in the district.
Now, the people on the side of, the Chickadee side of the street going up the street, is that going to be, how is that road being addressed if it's split between two neighborhoods?
When, it will probably be RCOC that sets up an SAD on Chickadee Lane, because it is split between the two subdivisions. At this point, I consulted with four other municipalities and RCOC, and the way they would handle this corner lot is to give them a partial unit of benefit in the Chestnut Hill Farms SAD. And then, if they get charged for Chickadee Lane, they're coming up with one unit of benefit combined between the two SADs.
So for clarity, that odd situation would be a situation where that person may not pay one unit?
Most likely.
One whole unit, because they're only benefiting from partial benefits?
And I've had several emails with that resident explaining that to her, that she would probably only be charged for half a unit of benefit.
Okay, that was good to know. And I just want to let, you know, just say, we've been working on this for years and years and years, the need for these subdivisions to be paved. And the fact that this board has agreed to allow the residents to do it through a cost-saving program of oversight, not going through the county, that's why some of these costs are half of what was done before. I used to live in Spring Lake back in the 90s, and I understand, you know, that 30 years ago, and, you know, in my opinion, we're, it's a miracle almost that we got three subdivisions to finally come up with 50, over 50% of approval, at the same time that, you know, this board's worked diligently to find a creative way to make it affordable. Because if we don't do this, and we don't allow the subdivision to make its road improvements through our program, they will be mandated to go through the county program. The prices will be at least twice as much, and you still won't have the ability to, you know, it's going to get to the point where Chestnut is. And our goal as a township, seeing this issue, is to try to get ahead of it, try to, if you can get away with paving your street for an $8,000 SAD, you're getting off light. Whether you want to pay the eight grand or not, this is a one-time opportunity that you're getting to do it at an affordable rate. Because we're only allowing so many neighborhoods to participate in this, because we're limited on the funds to offset the cost, to create the offsetted cost for the residents. So, nobody wants to do it, but this is the best plan we've had in decades. It's the only plan we've had that's worked so far, and it's the only plan that's making it even manageably affordable. So, although no one wants to do it, I think that there's not enough credit being given to what's happened to even make it affordable. And we don't even know what the costs are, but we know that the costs, as stated, are significantly less than they would be if the township didn't participate in making this an option for the residents. Although I feel bad for them paying, I think it's, we should, you know, everybody should get an attaboy for all the hard work to actually get an SAD, to this point at least, you know?
And we use Chestnut Hill Farms as an example, because I've dealt with probably 15 HOAs in the past months. But their roads have deteriorated to a point where buyers no longer want to look in there. And it starts impacting their asking prices on their homes. So, once you get to that point, and if you had to go through RCOC, is, are you ever going to recoup that money? You know, if you're going to pay $28,500, or now, today, it's probably more like $35,000 or $40,000, it makes no sense. So do you just let them go back to gravel?
Can I ask a question on amortization? How long are we giving the payback on?
That's a board decision, but it's typically been 10 years.
Okay, and that money is due upon the sale of your home, if that's before the payout? Or can that be transferred to the next owner, their tax roll?
It's assumable. Yeah, each installment is not a lien on the home until the December 1st billing of that year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Trustee Tetter?
Yeah, thank you. I had many similar questions to trustee Morocco, but I wanted to just reaffirm the cost piece, because there were some questions, or maybe some misunderstandings, maybe more accurate about cost. But my, so, is this an accurate statement that all of, all three efforts, all three of these SADs that are presented tonight, residents have been given at least a bulk number divided by the number of parcels?
The formal petitions had a total project cost on them, and a lot of the other informational material that went out gave them estimates.
Okay, and it sounds like based upon your role and experience as an assessor, when you're assessing a home, you're not necessarily assessing more value to a home because they have a longer stretch of paved road, right? So likewise, what I'm anticipating, your recommendation to be down the road, it will be very congruent with what residents have already, information that's been shared with them, in that it's going to be divided among the number of households rather than linear footage?
Correct. And part of what comes out in these public hearings and the mailings, just like the woman on the corner lot on Chickadee Lane, that's why we have the public hearings and the informational sessions, is to draw that out. Our eye is not going to go to all of those things all the time. So we rely on everyone to help bring that information forward.
All right, and one other question relative to the vote. It sounds to me that there's a process perhaps through your office, maybe another department within the township, or if the county's involved. What's the level of scrutiny placed on legitimizing the list of supporters? And I'm assuming if someone saw their name on said list, they would say, I didn't, this isn't my signature, somebody forged it, and you could call it in a question. So, what I'm getting at is, the affirmative votes have all been legitimized through a process of scrutinization, or lack of better word?
Correct. Carrie and her office go through the petitions first and compare the signatures to voter's registration. If they don't match, and sometimes our elderly, you know, their signature changes, then they come to us with the ones that she can't verify. We go into register of deeds and look at the most recent documents signed, be it a mortgage, a deed. We look at our property transfer affidavits, and we try to match that signature up and get it on the approval sign. But they're heavily scrutinized.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee Brown? Treasurer Brown, sorry.
Thank you. I'm happy with either one. I'll just point out, I just share a couple of things. I have gone through this process. I'm on a private road, and a few years back, I knocked on doors, and I, you know, had petitions signed twice. It was back then where the idea from someone in the neighborhood was, why don't we just let the township be the bank? And, you know, when government gets involved, it's more expensive. Before, I would always say, well, that's government for you. Now I try to defend that a little bit. Part of the increase is because we have to have more stringent controls when we're involved in things using taxpayer money. So yeah, there's more i's to dot, more t's to cross. And so, that's going to lead to higher costs, whether that's with us or the road commission. Has to go through a lot more approvals. That's part of the cost increase. Part of it is, when contractors see the government, they raise their bids. That's just how it is. So when the township took themselves out, and we didn't, we don't even have an HOA, so it was just, we sort of have a weak HOA, they went out and got the bids. And, you know, everything came in under budget, was super low, which is why you're seeing what you're seeing. And it's because the township's trying to do this and just be the bank, right? Some guidance, obviously, and a great deal of help where we can. But we don't want to have our engineers involved, and that helps you to be able to see the benefit of that. This is new for us, doing it on a public road. We're very hopeful that it's successful, and it could lead to us being able to do more of these in the future, and help people get things done that they simply wouldn't have been able to. The other point I wanted to talk about was the interest rates. Rates are set by board resolution. We like to try and be consistent. Right now, our rate is at 6%. It's the same amount that the county charges for these projects. It's been that rate for quite a long time. We also charge that rate on things like capital connection fees and things like that when people join the water system. So we do want to be consistent. Today, 6% is a good rate. Six years ago, when we got our roads done, it wasn't. A lot of people paid it off early because they could, and the rate was, so the board has the ability, if interest rates drop down quite a bit, to adjust those rates. You know, right now, it's 6%. I think that would be locked in on this. I don't know that it can be changed as you move forward. But that's the reason the rate is what it is. We don't want it to be such a good rate that no one wants to pay it off early, because, you know, we want to have it paid as soon as we can, so we can use those resources to help other people do their roads in five or seven, eight years, or whatever it is. I think that's all I have. Okay?
Trustee Hayward?
I'd just like to point out, I think one of the confusions of the rates, or how much each homeowner would pay, because they were talking about two different subdivisions. So they were discussing, a lot of, with the Spring Lake North, a lot of the, you know, the price was going around for that. And of course, it's considerably much larger for the other neighborhood, Chestnut Hills, yeah. So I think that was a confusion for why some people are hearing one rate, and somebody, or people are hearing another rate, because it's two different projects.
And tonight's maids all had estimates per parcel in them. One other thing I'd like to address, if I may, is someone signed a petition and then called back and said they wanted their name taken off. In that process, I think we bumped a spacebar or something, and their 115 feet got changed to 15, and that's how that happened. It was brought to our attention, corrected it immediately. But I prepared the documents for signature verification, split the staff up into two teams, and they go through it line by line, two different teams. So we did our very best. We just had a little oops, and it happened to be that one gentleman.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-006, setting the public hearing for the Independence Township Public Road, Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Number One, for Sheringham Woods subdivision as presented.
For- Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalimothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, the next one. Request to adopt resolution 2025 for seven, dash seven, sorry, dash 007, Public Roads Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Number Two, for repaving public roads, Spring Lake North subdivision. Do we have comments? Yeah?
I do have a comment, because it was brought to the attention, I am on the HOA, and this project started before I was a trustee. And like our last vote, I'm going to recuse myself again, or as part of it, so.
Can I get a motion to have trustee Hayward recused?
I'll make a motion that trustee Hayward recuse on his own.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Okay. Trustee Hayward has been refused for this. Any other comments on this? No? All right. Can I get a motion then, please?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash zero zero seven, setting public hearing for the Independence Township Public Road Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Two, for Spring Lake North subdivision as presented.
Support.
Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward, or, I'm sorry. Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalimothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor file?
Yes.
And Clerk Newbeck, yes. Motion carried sixty zero.
Okay, great. Next one, the request adopt Resolution 2025 dash zero zero eight, Public Roads Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Number Three, for repaving public roads, Chestill Farms subdivision. Any comments? No? Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash zero zero eight, setting public hearing for the Independence Township Public Road Special Assessment District 2025 SAD Number Three, for Chestnut Hills Farm subdivision as presented.
Support.
Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Uh, trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalimothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor file?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, and Treasurer Brown?
Yes. Motion. Okay. Next item up, is a request to appoint board and committee members for the Planning Commission and Safety Path Committee.
Budget amendment?
We got a budget amendment?
Do I have a budget? Did I miss one?
Budget amendment?
No, I don't have it.
Any administrative support for HR?
Yes.
Should be next.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Switched order. Yep, you're right. All right. Request approved 2025 budget amendment number three, part-time administrative support disposition for Human Resource Department. Can, any comments or questions? The public? No? Board?
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit about it from Melissa.
Yeah. I was on the same page, trustee Morocco.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta come up to the front if you want more people.
Hello. Hi, I'm Melissa Whiting, uh, Human Resource Manager for Independence Township. What would you like to know?
Do you have the actual mave in front of you?
I do now.
Okay.
Just give us a little background on maybe on what you're going to need support help with possibly, Melissa?
I do have it in front of me.
Okay.
Why don't you go through the description?
Okay. It's, the part, for a part-time administrative staff, staff support person with the intent of giving support directly to Human Resource Manager, with a salary of thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Payroll tax, two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven, and then PTO up to fifty-two hours, which would equal out to one thousand, forty dollars, for a total of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy.
And what would this person be doing?
Primarily recruitment assistance, so obtaining and processing legal documents for new hires, specifically for summer, the influx of summer hires that we get, compiling, maintaining records for HR, documenting staff changes, putting them in the files, making sure the digital files are up to date, scheduling staff meetings with HR, and scheduling interviews, record maintenance, file audits, clerical support, new hire application processes, general clerical.
Trustee Brown? I'm sorry, Treasurer Brown? It's fine. It's a tea, I'm in the bowl. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when summertime hits, our Parks and Rec hires how many hundred people?
A hundred to a hundred and fifty people.
It's just a huge amount of hiring, and it's so important, especially when you have a lot of younger kids coming in for, for these jobs, to really have them see us as a professional place. It might be their first experience, and so, being, being on top of all that for you, I mean, I just don't know how you could possibly get it done without some part-time help. And we have had part-time help there in the past.
We have, yes.
Just want to point that out.
Thank you.
Trustee Morocco?
I want to say, thanks for coming up to the podium, even though I know you didn't want to, but we don't all want to publicly speak, so we're going to make you do it.
No problem.
I did have an opportunity to talk to Melissa in detail today about this person, and as Paul alluded to, the rush of hiring and how that would take her away from her goals and objectives of, you know, meeting with the other employees, doing training, and all the other things that she would want to do. She also shared with me that this may not be a needed position for the whole entire year, depending on how the hiring went and stuff, so there's a little bit of flexibility there possibly, depending on how, you know, how we grow and what she does, but as Paul alluded to, there's a huge work flux coming in that we would suffer if we didn't give her support, some support. So, I'm definitely in support of her request to get additional help to staff us, which is way harder now and more challenging than in the past, and takes a lot more energy and time to find people that are going to stay for the summer and support our Parks and Recs, so I'm glad that you're getting out ahead of it, and that we can staff up and be, you know, start working on that right away, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge? Trustee Tetter?
In terms of the part-time position, will this be seasonal, based on that summer influx, or is this, is this six-month position?
So, it's hard to say. I, I put it in as a part-time position because once somebody is hired in this position, it may be that there's duties that can be delegated to that position that will make it, make me more available to do higher-level HR things that, that need to be done. There may, it may be that I can use this part-time person for document retention and, you know, updating files and making sure everything is, is as it should be so that I'm reserved for policy amendments, or, you know, when our contracts are up to, for negotiations, you know, doing, I can start implementing trainings that we aren't otherwise doing currently. I, I may keep that person long-term. I, it's hard for me to say because I, I don't currently have somebody in that position, and when I started here, I didn't have somebody in that position, so it's hard for me to answer that question accurately.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Hayward?
So, if, if you don't get this employee, who would have to handle all the summer hiring?
I would have to handle it all.
You don't do it yourself?
Mm-hmm. Last year, I handled it, I came in in May of last year, so some of it had already started, so I came in right in the thick of it. So, I'm getting ahead of it now because I remember how it was last year, coming in right in the middle, and it was a struggle. It's definitely, I definitely try and get ahead of it so that I can have somebody in place to help with that this year, because I would be having to handle that influx.
Okay. I'll move to approve the addition of a non-union, part-time administrative staff support position, reporting to the Human Resource Manager, and 2025 budget amendment number three as presented.
Support.
Okay. Can I get a, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Right. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, request to appoint board and committee members for Senior Community Center Advisory Committee. And here, we have Lisa. Looking like, do I have to come up?
Well, we talked earlier, he said no.
Yeah. I did. I tried to say my people.
He said no. What do you mean? So, we have two senior community center appointments up for, one's a reappointment, one's a new appointment, so Sue Schubert is up for a reappointment of a three-year term, and Ron Ritchie has applied as a new member of our, of our committee, our advisory committee at the senior center, so we'd like to recommend for him to have a three-year term as well.
Questions? Comments? No? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Ritchie and reappoint Sue Schubert to the Senior Community Center Advisory Committee with terms expiring on December thirty-first, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Now, request to appoint board and committee members for the Planning Commission Safety Path Advisory Committee. This is actually mine. I'm looking to do a recommend, a motion to appoint David Lohmeyer to the Planning Commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2007. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to appoint David Lohmeyer.
2027, sorry.
To the Planning Commission with a term expired December thirty-first, 2027.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, move to appoint Jeff Musson to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Musson to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026.
Sorry. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move to appoint Ron Ritchie to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expired December thirty-first, 2026.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Ritchie to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move to reappoint Patricia Droslinsky to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026.
Make a motion to reappoint Patricia Droslinsky to the Safety Path Advisory Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, 2026. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Right now, the last thing is to request the accepted proposal and approval agreements for a professional legal service. I am, that's mine. I'm looking to have the legal service for, for the Kelly firm. Finally, the, based on the procedures and the bidding process we went out to, the Kelly firm came, obviously is our current attorney, and their bid came in the lowest, given that factor and the fact that we have other engagements going on currently with their firm, I would like to retain him as our attorney going forward.
We should probably talk about that.
Yeah, so can we, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure. Go ahead, trustee.
I think that I'm in support of this. I like the fact that Dan's, you know, done a good job. I like the fact that he comes to these meetings pro bono for us as a resident, doing that, which is huge, that he was a trustee on the board, so he understands how this works and what, what our goals and objectives are, and, you know, from being a resident and being a board member, and the fact that he gives us a very fair price to be competitive against others, so for those reasons, I'm in support of retaining Dan and also adding the general, adding the code enforcement legal services to his services that he currently provides, which I believe will bring us a significant amount of savings and more align us with the retention of funds we get from the prosecutions, which I think is important, that we, you know, don't pay twice as much to get half as much back for doing it, so I think that's, that aligns us a lot better, so I, I support the motion. Clerk?
I just wanted to mention, I work with Dan in a prior community and his team, and I've had quite a bit said since they've come on board here with Independence Township from department heads, and it's not just Dan, but it's his whole team, and I really want to make a shout out to all of the other people that work with him, under him, beside him, and that have, have his back and has the township's back. They're very reliable. They've come to know our quirks. It's something that's unusual that you guys probably don't realize, but every township does things a little bit different. SADs, ordinances, resolutions, they've got to learn the way we do things. It's not just cut and dry out there in the, in that field, and personalities meld well with our directors, I believe with the board. I think the board would also make mention of that, and I think it speaks very highly for the community that he is also a resident, and I am very much in favor of bringing his services back for the township, but I did have a question. I wasn't certain who would be in charge with the prosecution and the code enforcement. Do you have somebody designated for that, and who would that be?
Currently, we have three attorneys that do code enforcement and prosecution. That'd be Jake Murts, Morgan Martin, and Nick Castro. My plan was, if, if it was awarded, that Nick Castro, who's a resident of Springfield, only about three miles up the road, would handle the prosecution. So, Nick has, he's a ten-year lawyer and has about three years of experience in prosecution.
Thank you.
Anything else? Trustee Tetter?
Yeah, and I know a lot of us are relatively new to the role, but I understand historically the, the process we go through to, from the RFP process through the decision, is typically done, and I know this isn't, this isn't, you know, a statement per se of your position, but learning the role is my understanding, is usually a little more of a collaborative discussion in making these decisions, because we're talking potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars when it comes to these contracts, so I was able, I was able to get the other two proposals because they weren't presented in the packet, so I would have just respectfully asked like, that there's more involvement, you know, kind of in a collaborative fashion, and so again, that's, I think it's more of an oversight than anything, but I think that would be really helpful. So, having, having been able to look through the other proposals, I would agree that the Kelly firm not only has a proven track record, and I think all of the, all of the applicants had, are certainly respected, credentialed, have all the, have all the various pieces, but I also think that when, when we're looking at being stewards of the, of the taxpayers and the residents of this township, that it's also important to consider cost. And so, competence coupled with the, the best and most affordable rates over time, and the fact that the Kelly firm has also offered up a not-to-exceed sixty thousand dollars we, on the litigation, I think we spent over a hundred and twenty-five thousand last year, so that alone is very compelling for me, and I think it's perhaps incumbent upon us to also hire them for the tax tribunal services, because the next closest was three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and this is a hundred and sixty. So, I think that's, that's important for us to consider as well.
Okay. Thank you. I, I will address the, the newness of me. The packet, it was my mistake. I did not include all the individuals or firms that bid. That was a mistake. They are available. I know that a few of you actually reached out to the clerk's office, because they're available publicly, so everybody can get them if they need to, and from that standpoint, you're right, that was my bad, and we'll make sure that we do that going forward. I think also what's important in this is the ability philosophically to align with who you're working with. Too much time can be wasted on debating how to approach things, and I think that one of the things that I also saw with knowing Dan just for a couple of months, is that we gel nicely in that arena as well. So, I think from that standpoint, I think we can move forward very quickly. I'm not saying that we're doge here, but there are a lot of steps I'm finding here in government that seems just to repeat itself, so, you know, in part of that, I'm looking to try to expedite the process to also be a good steward of the taxpayers' money, so, but duly noted, the other ones should have been in the packet.
Thank you. No, I, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just make a proposal to... I would just make a proposal to also nominate the Kelly Firm for track tax tribunal work, if there's a will for the board to consider that, based upon, again, the, those that responded to the RFP, I think, again, the reputation, the value, the comfort in the board members in working with the Kelly Firm, I think there's a compelling argument to support, bringing them on for a full suite of services and see how the next two years goes.
Yeah, I think we're going to be addressing that in a later meeting.
Okay.
There's some other things that, that I think that probably need to get flushed out.
Okay.
You know, we're just looking for more competitive bits. Any other questions or comments? No? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal received from the Kelly Firm of Auburn Hills, Michigan, for General Labor and Employment and Prosecution and Code Enforcement Legal Services, as presented and approved the agreement between the Charter Township of Independence and the Kelly Firm, PLC, to enter into a two-year fee-based agreement effective March 1st, 2025, with the option to extend the agreement for an additional one year upon mutual written consent. The township may terminate the agreements at any time upon written notice to the attorneys for any reason or no reason at all. The attorneys may terminate the agreements at any time upon the least 60 days written notice to the township for any reason or no reason at all, and direct the supervisor and clerk to sign the agreement as the authorized representatives of the townships.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item, closed session, budget session, study session, we don't have any of those, communication, future agenda items report. We have a report from Oakley County Sheriff's Office due on January 25, Building Department, January 2025, abbasal removal letter for 5854 Dixie Highway, and a communication with the State of Michigan Adult Foster Care Facility. Any partying board member comments? No?
Move adjourned. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need adjourned. Thank you, everybody.